Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
It is my pleasure to call to order the June 7th, 2018 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick. Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute, pledge. And I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. We have a larger-than-normal group with us, and we're looking forward to talking about some very great items tonight. So, this commission provides an opportunity for the public to participate in the development process through our city. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present facts about the project, along with their recommendations to the Planning Commission, who will approve an item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Our goal is to carefully consider each project and make a decision that will balance individual rights with public welfare and the general well-being of our community. I also ask, this is my first night leading this meeting, and so if I'm looking down at my script, it's not because I'm not interested, it's because I don't want to mess it up. So, thank you for bearing with me. So, we'll move on to public statements. This is a time is reserved for anyone who wishes to address the commission on any matter that is not on the consent calendar for public hearings. If you're here for items 5A through 5G, this is not the time to speak. Does anybody in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. All right. Seeing nobody, we will move on to Item 4, Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearings. Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearings are agenda items that typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a consent calendar non-public hearing item for separate consideration? Commissioner Coleman?
Yes, I'd like to remove Item 4B.
4B. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Coa. Coleman, do we have a second? Oh, no second, sorry. As I said, this is my first meeting. It's very different when you lead it. Great. All right. Any other items? If not, may I have a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Item 4A and moving Consent Calendar Item 4B to public hearings?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 17th, 2018, regular meeting, which is Item 4A, and move 4B to further discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Do we have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Wade, thank you. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Item Number 5, Consent Calendar Public Hearings.
Chair Kater, we need to address 4B.
Oh, yes, is now the time?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Kater. Item 5B is the annual City of Bakersfield's Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 2018 and 19. This program sets forth projects that will be constructed to maintain the city's existing streets, sewers, parks, office facilities, et cetera, and to build new facilities such as parks, fire stations, police stations, and more. A notice of exemption will also be considered, and staff is recommending approval. Navdeep Graywall is here from the Public Works Department and is available to provide a presentation if you would like one. However, if there is just a simple question related to this routine item, we can forego the presentation. I will leave that to Commissioner Coleman, who removed this item from consent.
I just had a few questions about the proposed budget in general, to what involvement has council or any of the elected officials had in preparing this budget.
Given that that's the context of your question, I do think it would be appropriate for Mr. Graywall to provide a brief presentation on this item, and it may answer some of those questions for you.
I'm sorry, who's Mr. Graywall?
He's here. I'll invite him up to the podium to provide the presentation.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Kater and fellow members of the Planning Commission. My name's Navdeep Graywall. I'm the Design Engineering Manager in Public Works in charge of the Capital Improvement Program. So, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to present to you the fiscal year 1819 Capital Improvement Program. To give you a quick overview, here are some of the city departments that have projects that are budgeted in the fiscal year 1819. We have Recreation and Parks, Robb Bank Convention Center, Water Resources, Police Department, Fire, Executive Department, Convention Visitors Bureau, and lastly, Public Works, which includes the TRIP program. And to dive more into each department's projects, I'll give a quick overview. For Recreation and Parks, we have the Kaiser Permanente Sports Village, Phase 4, the Torino Home Sports Complex at Mason Rin, Phase 2, Mertry Aquatic Center Improvements, Jastro Park, which is basically a tennis court resurfacing, partial conversion to a pickleball court, and the Acre Street at McKee Road Streetscape. Robb Bank Arena has miscellaneous improvements and arena suite rehabilitation. And then, the Convention Visitors Bureau is basically replacing their electronic welcome sign, which is non-functional. Moving on to Water Resources, they have their annual program for concrete panel replacements, they're upgrading for their Kern River, the SCADA system, which is a supervisory data acquisition management system, river control structures, various canal fencing upgrades to their wells, and various upgrades, service connections to their distribution system. Police Department is replacing their cooling tower at the police headquarters here in downtown, and in the bomb squad bunker relocation. Fire Department has Station 10 rehabilitations and roof repairs to Station 13, and then various council chamber upgrades for the executive department. And now, the presentation will move over to Public Works, and I'll start with just Public Works projects that are other than TRIP, and then I'll get into the TRIP program. And for those of you that don't know, the TRIP is the Thomas Roads Improvement Program. So, the first type of projects I wanted to cover are street improvements. We have ADA transition plan that we try to meet ADA transitional guidelines. We have a plan in place, and we try to dedicate money to address those type of items. Street improvements, we have a widening on Plans Road, it's just east of Cottonwood. And then, we have CDBG area projects, and that's basically funding through the HUD program. We have street light upgrades in the Oland area, LED lighting improvements within the Baker Street area, and various curb, gutter, sidewalk improvements within, you know, East Terrace, Old Kern, Beale area, and the Wilson Road area. Those are just the general vicinities. And then, we have another curb and gutter sidewalk project, which is a non-CDBG project, which is basically funding from the new gas tax SB1, which is a loan repayment. Moving on, we have Streets Division, which is a pavement maintenance. It's just our normal streets, maintenance, oiling program, pottle repairs. It's just a citywide maintenance program, and then we have specific SB1-funded projects. These are projects that will be done by our city forces. They vary from along Parkview, Berkshire Road, H Street, from Brun Dig Lane to 4th Street, Jewett Avenue, Penn Oak Boulevard, and then Clay Patrick Farm from Granite Falls to Hagman Road. Moving on, and more street improvements, this is our federal program for our pavement rehabilitation. These are projects that we put out to bid with the city through our traditional bid, design bid build, and contractors bid on it. We have Wyble Road, we have District Boulevard. These are predominantly federally funded, which comes through the transportation, federal transportation bill, and the local matches from SB1, which is the gas tax. And then, we have H Street and Haley Street, those are specifically SB1-funded projects, 100% SB1-funded. And then, we have bike pedestrian improvements. We have a bike share program, downtown pedestrian accessibility and connectivity project, and then a bike lane and pedestrian safety plan, which is predominantly funded by SB1 Other street improvements, we have a bridge preventive maintenance program. This is the second year of a five-year program. What this basically does is allows us to maintain our bridges, do basic maintenance, repairs of concrete overlay, methacrylate overlay type of project, and then, bridge rehab on North Chester over the Kern River. That last one was, we had some fire damage in January 2017, so we're just trying to repair some of that. And moving on to sewer storm improvement type of projects, we have budgeted two studies for next year, two downtown studies. One's a master sewer study, and another's a master drainage study. And then, we have sewer improvements, which are rehabilitation of our lift station at Bailey, which is near the corner of 32nd Street and H Street. And then, we're cleaning out the sewer line on Buena Vista Road along, and then also along McCutcheon Road. And then, we have storm drain improvements, rehabilitation. So, these two, Pistol Range and Talisman, are being designed in the current year. The funding for what you see up there for Pistol Range and Talisman is the construction in fiscal year 1819. And then, we'll start the design modifications for the storm lift station at 24th and Oak, which is located on the southeast corner of 24th and Oak. And then, just various ongoing rehabilitation to our sewer infrastructure. And moving on to facility improvements, the first one, we have Plant 2, we're replacing two variable frequency drives at a recirculation station, and then modifications to our secondary clarifier and wear adjustments. For Plant 3, we have rehabilitation of primary clarifiers, rehabilitation of grit classifiers, rehabilitation of a code gen, and rehabilitation to an influent line. And then, we're also upgrading to a maintenance management software. Other facility improvements, we have improvements at our Bakersfield Municipal Airport, which we're doing a northwest taxi lane rehabilitation. It's just a continuation of rehabilitation that we've been doing in past years. It's a continuation of that for Section C, and then other various improvements at the airport, which consists of a hangar door rehabilitation and other miscellaneous repairs. We have improvements at our Greenways Facility, which is located on Mount Vernon and Plans. We're doing some pavement repairs out there, a feasibility study for some power generation, and other various grading and drainage improvements. And then, other miscellaneous facility improvements for buildings, we're replacing our HVAC system at City Hall North, re-roofing City Hall North, doing a parking study for downtown, and then an equipment lift system modification at the courtyard. And moving into park improvements, here's a photo of Mason Rin, Phase 2, so we have that budgeted for next year, and then a continuation on for Sports Village, which will be the Phase 4. Currently, we just did the grand opening for Phase 2, and then also the Phase 3 of Sports Village, so next year will be budgeted for the next Phase 4, which is like the football fields and continuation. And moving on into our TRIP program, here's a map of the 24th Street improvements, which basically start at State Route 99 and ends at around P Street. This is part of our TRIP program. And various other improvements along the Centennial Corridor, we have our Phase 2, which is the Belt Terrace Project, Phase 3, which is a Bakersfield Freeway Connector, and the various Phase 4s, which is the 58 Main Line and the 5899 Connector ramps, and then also the Stockdale and Ennis Lane Roundabout Project. And finally, a right-of-way acquisition for the West Beltway, West Side Parkway. And that concludes my presentation, so I'm open for any questions.
Commissioner comments, or do we public comments? Okay, thank you. Commissioners for comments? Commissioner Coleman? Oh, Commissioner Lomas?
I'm curious, in receiving that $50 million from the federal sources, how does that affect this budget?
Uh...
Because it says specifically, it's talking about funding of the Centennial Corridor with a $25 million grant, so an influx of $50 million, wouldn't that change this budget?
Commissioner Lomas, I'll help out with that. That was something that was anticipated, and I believe that it was included in the budgeting process for this capital improvement plan. But kind of stepping back a little bit, the capital improvement plan is considered and approved by the City Council, and it was on their agenda last night. It's a two-step process. The process last night was for them to accept public comments, provide any additional direction to staff, and they did that last night. And then, it will go back to the City Council for final approval and consideration on June 20th. The purpose of the hearing tonight is that state law requires that the Planning Commission make a determination that the projects that are included in that plan are consistent with our general plan. It's called a General Plan Conformity Review, and that's the action that was before the commission tonight.
If you don't mind, so we shouldn't be looking at any of the numbers, just the projects themselves?
That would be correct. The numbers are outside of the purview, the budgeting components. However, the projects themselves are what's under consideration this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. Just, how are projects selected to be capital improvement expenses for this coming calendar year?
So, we start our budgeting process around January, and then it can go from anything from, like, for example, like a traffic signal. We have a traffic signal priority list, so our traffic engineering department may recommend a project that, my division takes the responsibility of estimating and putting it into the budget. We take feedback from other departments. Usually, in January, I send out an email to all the division heads, asking them for any recommendation, any projects they may want proposed for the budget. And my staff undertakes that to start estimating, doing the research, and figuring out a price, basically, for the budget. And we take feedback. We may have, you know, over the years, as a design engineering manager, if I have feedback from the public, a citizen may have a complaint, or, you know, they're concerned about a certain tree widening. I usually have, like, a to-do list where I keep a list of all my projects. It's my duty, I'll go ahead and estimate it, not necessarily know if it's going to make it into the budget if we have the funding. That's all dependent on what the funding availability is, but we'll go ahead and estimate it. And if it doesn't make it into this fiscal year, we have a record of it in case we want to propose it for next fiscal year. Or sometimes, what we do is we'll just put it in the five-year CIP plan.
So, do you add up all your projects you want to do, and then go, this is a $209 million budget, or do you have a $209 million, and then you back up the other way and figure out how you're going to spend it?
Yeah. When I start estimating, I don't know what the budget amount is. Usually, we're given a criteria, you know, I might have an idea of, okay, how much TDF funds we have. Like, for the pavement project, for example, I mentioned, we already know from the feds how much money we have. So, that's a two-year process, so that, we already know what's budgeted, because we have to put that in the federal document, and then my job is to include it in the CIP. But we look at the TDF funds. For example, our Streets Division may ask for me to modify or rehab some lift stations. I have to look at, well, how much revenue is in the enterprise fund?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification, Ms. Kitchens. I'll withdraw any more of my questions.
I see no other commissioner comments, except I had two quick questions about the pedestrian and bike improvements listed for, I believe it was pedestrian connectivity and bike lane enhancement. You could just elaborate what actionable items are involved in both of those?
So, there's a bike share program that we got about a $200,000 grant from Caltrans through SB1. That's to help us develop, basically, a bike safety plan. It's still in the early stages. We're going to go through a request for qualification from consultants to basically help us develop bike safety. We'll look at accident data, other hotspots, stuff like that, and then that'll help us develop a safety plan. And then, the other connectivity bike plan that I was talking about, that's actually installing bike lanes, developing class, like, Class 2, Class 3 bike routes.
Mostly Class 2 and Class 3 throughout?
Yeah.
Great. And the pedestrian connectivity, is that ADA improvements on intersections, or is it?
That's, so what that one is, is basically adding sidewalks and access ramps within the downtown area. So, we've started the design in this fiscal year 1718, but that's to fund the construction of it. So, we're adding, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but within the downtown area, wherever there's barrier curbs, we're adding handicap access ramps. Where there's missing sidewalk, we're adding sidewalks. There are some areas where sidewalks is dislodged and separated, we're reconstructing those. So, yeah, I mean, that project right there has to go to the CTC, which is the California Transportation Commission. They'll take action on their June 27th meeting, and once we have those funds, the project is essentially designed, and then we'll put it out to bid.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Seeing no other comments, can I have a motion to adopt the staff recommendation for Item 4B?
Motion to approve 4B.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to Item 5, Consent Calendar Public Hearings. The next agenda section includes public hearing items that are considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. The Community Development Director will read each of the items on the consent calendar to ensure that the public has an understanding of all items to be considered. If you would like to speak on an item, please come forward after the items are read and ask that the item be removed for discussion. If no items are removed by a member of the public or a commissioner, the commission will vote on all items together in one motion without further comment. Ms. Kitchen, please.
Thank you, Chairman Kater. We do have a rather lengthy agenda tonight. It is a general plan amendment window, so bear with me while I read through these. I'll try to do it quickly as possible. Item 5A is an extension of time, which is a vesting tentative tract map 7142. This is a proposal to approve three additional years to develop this project and build 214 single-family homes at the southeast corner of Rudd and Palm Avenue. Item 5B is General Plan Amendment Zone Change 17-0348 and Plan Development Review 17-0349. This is a proposal to change the land use entitlements from suburban residential to high-medium density residential, and R3 PUD designations to build 230 apartment unit complex on 13 acres near the southeast corner of Haggen and Alamon Roads. I do want to note, for the benefit of the audience, staff has elected to remove this item from the consent agenda, so we will be talking about this, and there will be a staff presentation, so there's no need from the public to get up and remove this item. We will do that for you. We have heard your comments loud and clear, so we'll be discussing this item tonight. The next item is Item 5C, General Plan Amendment Zone Change 17-0354. This is a proposal to change the land use entitlements from low-medium density residential to high-medium density residential, and R2 PUD designations on 38 acres near the north, or to the north of McCutcheon Road, a quarter mile west of Ash Road. Item 5D is a General Plan Amendment Zone Change 18-0050. This is a proposal to change the land use designations from commercial to high-medium density residential, and R2 designations on 11.92 acres located at the northeast corner of Buena Vista and Harris Roads. Item 5E is General Plan Amendment Zone Change 18-0032. This is a proposal to change the land use entitlements from low-density residential to low-medium density residential, and R2 designations on 20 acres located at the northeast corner of Panama Lane and South Allen Road. Item 5F is Plan Development Review 18-0098. This is a proposal to allow 7,000-square-foot medical office and care facility located at 6640 Wyble Road. And finally, Item 5G is a Planning Director's Report and a PDR Review 18-0105 and 18-0106. This is a proposal to update the site configurations for PCD Plan 16-0220, which consists of 130 multifamily units on 7.06 acres, and PUD 16-0222, which consists of 605 multifamily units on 38 acres, both located west of Coffee Road, north of Brimhall Road, and this is the Bakersfield Commons Project. With that, that concludes the reading of the consent calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen. At this time, I will open all of the Consent Calendar Public Hearing items, with the reminder that Item 5B has already been moved into the public hearing portion of tonight. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a Consent Calendar Public Hearing item?
Commission Chair, my name's Leslie Clinchew. I'd like to request that Item 5A be removed for further discussion.
Is there any other member of the public that would like, are there any commissioners that would like to remove? Seeing no one. You're not too late? I have not said my... Commissioner Coleman?
I'd like to have Item 5G removed, please.
Sorry, I've never been to one of these. So, when we say we want them removed, that means we want to talk about it before it just goes through, right?
Correct. And also, if you could state your name?
Heidi Sherman.
Thank you, Heidi.
So, 5D.
5D.
Yeah, thank you.
Seeing no one else, I will make them, we will move forward on Item 5C, 5E, and 5F, moving Item 5A, 5B, 5D, and 5G to the public hearing portion of the evening. So, at this time, the public hearings on all consent calendar public hearing items not moved or closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff recommendation on the consent calendar public hearing items 5C, 5E, and 5F? Incorporating all staff memorandum and revised staff recommendations, if any.
Motion to approve staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner Wade. May I have a second? Thank you.
I'll second that, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Moving on to Item 6, public hea... Oh, oh, sorry, Madam Secretary. I'm looking forward to the public hearing. It's a roll call vote, thank you.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Item 6, public hearings, we...
Thank you, Chairman Kater. So, first, we will hear these items in the order that they were on the consent agenda. So, the first will be consideration of Item 5A, which is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 7142. As you can see from the aerial here, this project is located at Rudd Road and Palm Avenue in the southeast quarter of that project area. And this is a tentative tract map that was approved several years ago for the creation of 220 lots on this property, and also one sump lot and five landscape lots. The total size of this parcel is 80 acres. And again, the purpose of the request tonight is simply to extend that previously approved tract map for an additional period of three years. Typically, tract map extensions are considered routine and non-controversial, and as I mentioned, there is already the entitlement on this site. The applicant is simply requesting an additional three years to build it out.
Thank you. This time, we'll open public comment on Item 5I. Before we, before the public comes, I'd just like to quickly say how the process works. It's not, staff will first give a report, then we will ask those in favor of the press... staff will first give a report, uh, then we will ask those in favor of the project, um, to speak. Afterwards, we'll hear from those in opposition. And, um, each side will then have five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but please note that questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that, on this item is closed. Written comments may also be provided to the clerk, to the clerk, who will give copies to the commission. Uh, we ask that you are, that you be respectful of others participating in the process and, um, limit repetition, actually not repeat, uh, remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear manner. Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing on item five A. Please state your name.
Good evening, uh, new Mr. Daniel Kater Chair and, uh, rest of the commissioners. My name is Cindy Para. I'm here, uh, from Smith Tech USA. I am representing the, uh, owners of the property, Daniel, um, Donald R. Paula, and we are here asking for an extension in time due to the slow rebound of the housing market. Uh, as stated in the letter from planning, uh, the environmental impacts for the development of the project were evaluated in two thousand and eight in accordance with the CEQA regulations. Mitigation measures were included in the project in order to avoid or reduce impacts. We are not asking for any changes on this tentative map. We are just merely asking for the three-year extension, and, uh, we will adhere to all previous conditions put on the tract. So we are just, once again, asking that you approve the extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Would those who wish to speak in opposition, please state your name?
My name, hello, everybody. Uh, my name is Donald R. Paula, and, uh, ditto on all of that. And, uh, we've had this tentative map for ten years, and I'm, I, I have no idea why someone would be upset about it, but, uh, I, so I don't know what to say until I hear what somebody's upset about. Thank you.
Thank you. Please note, I was overeager in opposition, and that comment was actually in favor, I believe. Are there any other comments in favor? If not, we will move to those in opposition.
Thank you, Chairman and Commission. Again, my name is Leslie Clinchew. I live at one four eight oh one Orchard Crest, which is very near where this development is going to be. And ten years ago, I did submit public comment with very much concerns about the high density. I know this is a routine matter to extend, but I would ask that you consider that very much has changed out there in ten years, and I do think the environmental impacts should be revisited to make sure that the mitigations that were required ten years ago are still adequate. Uh, for one, traffic has increased significantly with the build of West Side, uh, West Side Parkway. Uh, traffic on Renfro and Heath, which are the major roads, as well as Rudd and Palm, has grown significantly. So any look at traffic ten years ago would probably not be accurate today. There's also been more growth in homes both west and north of the proposed development. The higher-density small lots of this tract map are very uncharacteristic of all the neighborhoods around there, which are much larger lot, all single-story, mostly custom homes that are in the range of two thousand to twenty-five hundred square feet. Uh, when I talked to staff, they felt that this development is similar, but their definition of similar seemed to be curbs and gutters and sidewalks. But we aren't seeing it as very similar in nature, at much higher density than what's surrounding it, and want to make sure that the mitigations were really adequate to address circulation, traffic, and so on. Also, I'm concerned that there, um, really wasn't any, um, mitigation for providing any sort of a green belt linear park or something in that neighborhood. Staff claim that the existing parks are only a third of a mile away, but I think that's really stretching it, and you have to be a bird to get there in a third of a mile. Uh, most of those residents would have to go three-quarters to a mile away and cross a very major, uh, traffic on Renfro Road, or to go the other direction to Heath to get to those parks. So again, I would just ask that you consider, ten years have gone by, a lot has changed in that area, and ask that those mitigations, those impacts be revisited before proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll provide a time, uh, for rebuttal, uh, from both those that approve and those that, or those that support and those that oppose the project. Um, please note that this time is limited to five minutes, so please make sure that your responses and your comments are succinct, and, uh, please, if you could make your way to the front, so that we can be timely.
Check, Kater, you might, might want to double check that there was nobody else in opposition. I think, I can't tell if this other gentleman over there wants to get up and speak, but...
Thank you, Mr. Agar. Um, before I move on to rebuttal, is there any, anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on item five A in opposition?
Okay, proceed to rebuttal.
I think we might have. Nope, okay. Thank you. That's all right. Seeing no one, we will move on to rebuttal. Uh, if those that, those, uh, in support of the project, uh, five minutes for rebuttal. There. Yes.
The traffic, of course, is going to be, there's quite a bit that's going to happen with the traffic when, uh, Brimhall goes through, which is going to make it, uh, a much different health and safety issue inasmuch as, uh, once that goes through, uh, there's going to be a, a connection to the sewer on the east side of Renfro Road and, and to the sewer that's already, uh, ready to be hooked up on the, uh, on the, uh, west side of Rudd Road. Uh, as far as safety is concerned, uh, there's a fire station that has to go all the way from, from, uh, Brimhall, all the way down, uh, uh, Renfro Road to, uh, to Palm Avenue, and then back to, uh, uh, Brimhall. If there was a, something that they had to get, get there to, it probably adds about seven or eight minutes. Uh, as far as the green belt, I, you guys are, I don't know, I, you know, Smith Tech did it, and, uh, and everybody has been happy with it for the last ten years. And, uh, as far as high density, I didn't, when we were doing this, uh, we decided that we wanted quarter acre lots so that, because that wasn't, at that point, high density. And if you, if someone, it'd be a lot easier for someone to go to half acre lots, uh, from quarter acre lots than it would be for, if we were to put half acre lots and then for someone to go, well, let's go down to quarter acre lots. Anyway, um, like I say, things haven't really changed that much, except that it's completely surrounded, except for Frolic's place right next to us. And, uh, you know, it's, we're not hopscotching, we're, we're, uh, the, it's, it's time. So I, you know, if you guys decide that you want half acre lots to, so that it's more like Talladega, I, I thought there were quarter acre lots there. I, I guess I was wrong. I, I didn't, I haven't really gone out there and really looked at them or looked at a plot map and measured anything. So, that's, I'm just throwing myself at your mercy. It's been there for ten years, and, uh, I thought this was going to be just a, a nice, easy, uh, another three years, so that we can, you know, eventually stop farming it and put it into houses like it should be, because it's really tricky to farm surrounded by homes, because, uh, you can't spray, uh, you can't move equipment in there, and, and you can't really grow something, uh, profitable that you can't spray. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the audience wish, uh, to speak in rebuttal in support of the project?
Commission, my name is Jeffrey Graham. I live at one four eight zero nine Orchard Crest Avenue. Uh, my property currently butts up to the lot in question, T seven one four two. Um, from what I can understand by the favor, the size of the current proposed, uh, impact, uh, building seems to be in question, uh, due to size. Uh, going back to what Mrs. Clinchew said, the proposed building doesn't quite fit what's currently around it. Um, we understand that, uh, time, you know, building has to go on, and I understand with the, um, farming aspect of it, but, uh, we would just really consider that the environmental impact be re-looked at, because it's a ten-year-old environmental...
I'm sorry, if I could interrupt, we're still receiving, uh, support comments?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so if you, uh, support it?
I, I thought, no, I do not.
Otherwise, um, we'll get to you, uh, I, I believe. Are there any more who wish to speak in support? Seeing no one, we have, uh, we will close the, uh, the rebuttal of support, for support, and we will gladly receive your comments, uh, as a rebuttal in opposition of item five I.
All right.
Hey, can you, uh...
Sir, you can, you can come back.
Sir, uh, I, I welcome you to finish your comments, not to, yes.
Sorry.
Just want to make sure that we're giving you the proper time.
Sorry, no, thank you.
Okay, please begin the rebuttal. Thank you.
Okay, so, anyway, I, I would request that the environmental impact be re-looked at. Um, it's a ten-year-old impact, and with the extension, it will now turn into a thirteen-year impact, and the lot's changed in ten years, and a lot will change in thirteen years. So, that's all I'm requesting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of the public that wish to, um, to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on this item and return to commissioners for comments and action. Uh, Commissioner comments? Yes, um, Commissioner Lomis?
Ms. Jackie, would you like to, uh, to the members of the public that, that came, there are certain entitlements that this, this property owner has. So I'd like staff to explain the legality on it and what we as a commission can do. It's so much nicer to hear from her than me. So, if you could, please?
Thank you, Commissioner Lomis. I almost said Chairman Lomis. Apologies, Mr. Kater.
It's all right.
Uh, so there were a couple of important questions that were raised during the public testimony. Uh, one is, how do we look at this? Uh, it's important to note that in two thousand and eight, your commission approved this map, uh, and approved the zoning to create estate zoning on this property. That has a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet per lot, and that's roughly consistent with the county zoning that's adjacent. Uh, the surrounding properties are zoned estate as well, and the county minimum for the estate zoning is a quarter of an acre, uh, which is about twelve thousand four hundred square feet. Uh, so these lots that are proposed are consistent with that. Some of the other properties have developed a little bit larger with half acre lots, uh, but the estate zoning is the largest zoning that the city has. Uh, and so this project was developed in accordance with that, and this property owner does have a vested right to develop the property this way. And the map action that's before us tonight is simply the way that the lots would be subdivided. So regardless of whether this particular map is approved or denied, the property owner has a right to develop ten thousand square foot lots on this property, and that cannot be changed. Uh, with regard to the environmental impacts, we certainly agree that it's important to look at those things and make sure that that review of environmental doesn't go stale. Uh, so when this project entitlement was approved in two thousand and eight, it included several mitigation measures to ensure that the impacts would be appropriately addressed in the future. Uh, with regard to traffic, this project will be required to pay into the traffic impact fee system, and that is a regional system that projects pay into, to ensure that their impacts to the city traffic system are offset appropriately. Uh, with regards to the parks and the green belt comments, this project will also be required to pay parkland mitigation fees, and those fees will go into a fund that then, that is then allocated to construct parks that would serve this, uh, residential area. Uh, and in regard with the comments related to density and compatibility, uh, as I mentioned, this site is zoned, uh, in a way that's compatible, as compatible as the city can be with the adjacent county properties. Uh, so with that, I would just remind your commission that if there was an action to disapprove this map, it would have to be made, uh, because there was some sort of imminent reason that the way that this map was laid out wasn't compatible with the community. But again, the property owner would have the vested right to come back and map it with ten thousand square foot lots.
So I hope that helps in that, thank you. I, thank you for, for understanding. And there are things that we, we can consider and things that we can't. Um, given that, I, if you'll indulge me just a moment more.
Yes.
This, um, what this does, this map, and correct me if I'm wrong, it sets their fees back to, back at the two thousand and eight levels. Are any other fees addressed or added to, like, in meaning that, let me just take my question one step further, in that, how long do, must we continue to approve maps of this age?
Uh, so the maps are initially approved for a period of three years, and the municipal code allows for the applicants to come in and request two extensions, uh, for three-year terms. The, so typically, that's an aggregate of nine years for life in a map. The, if you do the math, two thousand and eight, two thousand and eighteen, we're at ten years. The reason for that is because the state superseded local land use during the recession and provided automatic extensions to many maps throughout the city and throughout the state. Uh, so the applicant has not had to use their two extensions yet. Uh, this is the first year that the state has stopped providing those automatic extensions, which is why they're requesting an extension today.
Very well explained. Thank you. So is this their, did I catch that right? This is their first chance that they can do it again for another three years. So in theory, this map could be twenty-one, twenty-four?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, it could go all the way to twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomis. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Coleman?
Blame the state. Blame the state, yes. Uh, Ms. Kitchen, um, I was reading the, uh, letter that we received from, uh, Doug and Leslie Clinchew. I'm sorry if I got the name wrong. Uh, uh, she mentions here that there's approved lot sizes of six thousand square feet, and, but your response letter said that it's all approved at ten thousand. Can you comment on that? Was this an error, or...
Uh, that may have been a misunderstanding. Uh, I've put the map up on the screen for you. Unless you have really good eyes, you probably can't quite see it, but those are each ten thousand square foot lots. Uh, and again, the engineer from Smith Tech is here today to, uh, confirm that, but this is the map that was approved, and there are no six thousand square foot lots.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other commissioner comments, um, I, uh, can I have a motion? We'll let Larry make the motion.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the extension of time for vesting map tract, vesting tentative tract map seven one four two. That's agenda item five A.
Okay, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomis. Madam Secretary, roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomis?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, we're now moving on to, um, to item five B, the, uh, general plan amendment for zone change number seventeen zero three four eight. Ms. Kitchen, if you could provide, uh, the background? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kater. So, this is the one I think many of you are here for tonight. We are going to give a little bit more thorough of a staff presentation for this item. I will invite Steve Esselman up to the podium. Steve is the principal planner that oversaw the preparation of this project and with that, I'll hand it over to Steve.
Honorable commission, my name is Steve Esselman. I am the principal planner of advanced planning and I'm the one that oversaw all of the general plan amendment zone changes for this evening. What we have here is general plan amendment zone change 170348 and precise development review 17-0349. This is brought before you by Marino and Associates on behalf of Ban Rita Incorporated, care of Vycus Guy. And this is a request to change a general plan designation and a zoning, zone district as well as precise development review. The project is located on 17.377 acres in northwest Bakersfield, south of Hagman Road, between Piedmont Street and Allen Road. The project would allow the development of up to 228 multifamily dwelling units at a density of about 17 units per acre. The site and areas adjacent to the north are currently vacant. Suburban residential properties and single-family residential are located to the east. Industrial uses and single-family residential are located to the south. Sump, the BNSF railroad tracks and various industrial and manufacturing businesses are located to the west. Am I allowed to, can I, oh, cool. That'll work. The general plan amendment request would change the land use designation from suburban residential to high-medium-density residential. High-medium-density residential allows for greater than 7.26 but less than or equal to 7.42 dwelling units per acre, per net acre. I got a little bit out of place. Did I jump one by accident? Oh, there it is. Sorry about that. The zone change request would change the zone district from E, estate, which is a 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size, to R3PUD or multiple-family dwelling planned unit development combining district. This zone district allows for the apartment complex as envisioned by the applicant. This slide we put in, this is the area of noticing. We generally, as a policy, the city does noticing within a 300-foot buffer of any project site. So, this is the various properties that were noticed as part of this. In addition to the noticing at the 300-foot buffer, there was signs placed at the site per city requirements, noticing this, this public hearing at this planning commission. All sequoia and public hearing noticing was done in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. Staff received seven comments in opposition before the posting of the PC agenda and these comments and staff responses are found in your staff report. Subsequent to the posting of the staff report, there was an additional 43 comments related to this project. That was up till noon today when I had to finally cut it off. Of those, there was one comment from Dogger saying that there were no known wells at the site. There was one comment from the air pollution control district saying that with payment into the ISR, the indirect source rule, impacts would be less than significant to air quality. There was one comment from the Kern County superintendent of Schools essentially saying that there is no impact with the payment of fees. And the rest were in opposition. And we have before you a memo random that we have prepared that provides every single comment up till noon and responses to all those comments. Since noon today, we received an additional 13 emails and phone calls in opposition. Those are not presented for you today, but I did do a cursory glance at all of those and they were essentially mirroring the same concerns as what is in your memorandum. Plan development review is also being considered concurrently with this general plan amendment zone change request. Should the commission decide to approve the project, the PD review would be final upon approval by the planning commission and the GPA zone change will be scheduled for hearing and final approval by the city council. From purely a land use perspective, staff concluded that the project is consistent with surrounding development, the general plan and the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends adopting the mitigated NECT, approving the general plan amendment zone change and approving the planned development review. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
The public hearing on this item is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project, please step up to the microphone, identify yourself and proceed. Thank you.
Chairman Kater, members of the commission, I'm Jim Marino. I'll be speaking for Ban Rita this evening. We, of course, support staff's recommendation and of approval and we would hope you do too. We read and agree with the staff report, the conditions of approval, and we also want to thank staff for doing such a great job with the analysis and report and working with the developer-owner over this past year. Before you this evening is the planned unit development and it's on a very difficult-to-develop infill parcel. In fact, it was 10 years ago this month that I first submitted an application for the, what they call the vacant property to the north, which is actually zoned M1 and M2. So, that's industrial property to the north. At that time, the separation of grade at the Hagman Drive and Hagman Road and the railroad tracks did not happen yet. This parcel was initially included in that, but although they knew what they wanted to do with the property to the north along Hagman Road, this property, it was very difficult to figure out what they wanted to do. That's mainly while they had a plan for the property to the north, this property is impacted not only by the railroad tracks and the residential, but there's the industrial to the north and I believe the entire other side of the railroad track to the south is also industrial. I believe that's shown on the front page of your staff report. This parcel was initially, kidding me. So, considering the, the shape of the property and the adjacent uses, they just didn't know what to do with it. It's suburban residential, four units per acre on the general plan. They, they looked at a lot of different things to do with it, but it's got a very, very odd shape. The thinking 10 years ago, with that traffic coming from a commercial or industrial use on the property would go north to Hagman Road and residential uses on the property would go east to Piedmont. They also looked at every residential use, including small lot subdivisions, the mobile home park, four units per acre. Any residential use that they looked at would basically be boxed in on three sides by industrial and it would have to use Piedmont as the access point. In addition, any single-family residential would not be able to comply with the noise standards due to the railroad tracks. What was not considered 10 years ago, or until Ban Rita came along, was the project before you tonight, a multifamily project that has access up to Hagman Road and not onto Piedmont. The owners of the property to the north have agreed to allow a private road be extended across their property from the north line of this PUD and that would connect with, with the south side of Hagman across the street from Rushmore Drive. The project also allows residential units to be clustered, so the odd shape of the property did not have as big an impact. With the multifamily residential, the noise from the railroad tracks could be reduced to less than significant. The mitigation outlined in the noise study and the Title 24 compliance would require a lot of work, including a 14-foot-high wall along the railroad tracks and that wall would also help mitigate the noise that's impacting the residential to the east. In addition to the mitigation for the noise, there will be some significant improvements required of this project that will benefit the area. Those are outlined in the conditions of approval and mitigation measures. Most notably is they have to resolve a constriction in the sewer line south of Rhodedale Highway and they have to add some road improvements to the area. We think staff did an excellent job with the mitigation measures with their negative declaration and I believe their responses to the letters from neighbors adequately responds to concerns regarding traffic, police, schools, lighting, sewers, air quality and others. I would like to say one item about the traffic study because there was some discussion earlier. The traffic study looked at what's existing today and what will be existing in 2040. Today, every intersection in the area except one would be running at A. And in 2040, every intersection in the area except one will be running at A and the same one, Hagman at Jenkins, was the problem intersection. There's site-specific mitigation outlined in the conditions of approval and those are obvious, but what's not obvious is that there's also conditions contained in the regulations that reduce impacts and those are conditions that are put on every project in the city. Some of those standards and fees are noted in the staff report, but some are not. The planned unit development zoning that is part of this request was picked by Ban Rita because it's got that, what you see is what you get aspect to it. If anything is changed to the site plan or the conditions of approval, it requires a zone change, additional analysis and public hearings. So, it's, they'll be locked into what you're looking at tonight. As staff correctly pointed out, there are very few existing opportunities for apartment living in this area. Approving an apartment project at this location will help with the general plan policies of having a variety and inclusive housing in this area. It's also an opportunity to infill a very, very difficult parcel to develop. With me tonight, the property owner, developer, Dr. Guy, and Craig Homel, who represents the owners of the property to the north that have agreed to let them cross their property. I want to thank you for your consideration and we would appreciate your support of the staff recommendation to approve the project. We're here to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the project? So, please come to the microphone, identify yourself and proceed. Seeing no one, we will move on to opposition. If there's anybody who wishes to speak in opposition of item 5B, now is your time to speak. Please come to the microphone, identify yourself and proceed.
I am Jamie Paddock. I live at 12541 Paddock Place and I would like to turn in, what I have on me right now is 582 signatures against... So, my home sits on 12541 Paddock Place. Several generations have enjoyed our quaint three-acre corner of Bakersfield for the past 46 years. As you can see, the street even carries our name. We are proud to have a small piece of our wonderful city carrying the name, our Paddock name. Our home has several outbuildings, animal enclosures and areas for gardening, farming. We very much enjoy living where we live. Paddock Place is a short, very quiet, deadened street shared by just a few neighbors and ourselves. Now, while we completely understand change is inevitable, we have seen many changes come to Bakersfield over the years. We absolutely cannot accept the change proposed by Hagman Apartment Project. Allowing this project to go forward will jeopardize our way of life. Our concern is as follows. I own and operate a licensed home daycare and I have for nine years. One of my main selling points is off-road parking, very quiet surroundings. The children's play yard is private and secluded and safe. If there are 230-unit, two-story apartment complexes right next to my property, it would destroy the peaceful, quiet, safe environment and deprive us of privacy. You can guarantee there will be, can you guarantee there will be no child predators in these apartments? I am concerned with noise complaints on my children playing outside. I am concerned about the noise and pollution coming from the apartments, the dirt, the dust and noise during construction of said apartments. A dear neighbor contacted Valley Fever at the time they put in the underpass at the railroad crossing on Hagman. Can you guarantee that if my children are outside playing during construction, there will be no exposed, they will not be exposed to Valley Fever spore that lives in our soil? My job is to protect these sweet children and my care. This project puts the well-being of these children and all of its surrounding neighbors in jeopardy. During the meeting in February concerning the site proposed, we were lied to. The developer and owners told us repeatedly, Paddock Place and Piedmont Road will not access the roads, but that they would put a road across the vacant lot north of the proposed property extending Rushmore Street. Contrary to what we were repeatedly told, developers, the developing proposal in writing shows just the opposite. It states, "It is anticipated that the across the site, access to the site will be via Paddock Place extended and Piedmont Avenue to the east." There is no mention of this new road going across the field. We were lied to, we, we asked the question over probably 15 times and their answer was still no. We won't go through Paddock Place and Piedmont will not be access road either. We even read the possibility of intimate domain to take our property. That property that would be taken is our circle driveway. Our private interest for my parents to drop off the children safely without worrying about traffic. We will be going from 15 cars a day down our street to over 500 a day. Hagman is a, no, sorry, is, this is, we have been deceiveded about something so important as property access roads and we have, we have grave concerns about having them as our neighbors. The city should be very cautious about changing the zone and dealing with what we feel is a company using shifty tactics to make a buck at our expense. Our land is currently below the grade at the proposed apartment unit we'll be on. We sit in a hole directly to the east side of the proposed property. So, what happens to the water? The apartment complex will be concrete and asphalt and there's nowhere through the water to run except for right down our property causing flooding. That again impacts our property and my business. What will adding 230 apartments do to our schools? You know, we've already, I'm sure you got many letters on that. The schools, a significant increase in noise, apartments in most case are temporary living. So, that's going to create a lot of different people coming and going. People are less prone to care for and respect the property and their surroundings when it is not their property they own. The property owners are stating these will be luxury apartments renting for 15 a month and that might be the plan at first, but do me a favor and imagine for yourself what luxury apartments and rentings look like. Ag property, railroad tracks and industrial next to a sump, that's not luxury living. They won't be able to rent it for that price and then what do we end up with? Lower priced, lower income or section eight possibly. Then we'll pay the price of value or home shopping, crime rate increase, people stealing or vandalizing graffiti and so on. What about complaints on our animals? We all know the large animals comes with smells, flies, no matter how well we keep up with the cleaning and pest control. What if we need to plow our land? That comes with dust and more complaints. We bought here so we could raise the animals we want, farm the fruit and vegetables we want. I appreciate your time and plead with you, please don't allow apartments to go in. We all know it's a tough world we live in and this is our safe, quiet, happy place to raise our children, our farm, our land and raise our animals. We bought this property 13 years ago from my husband's parents, the house my husband was born and raised in to keep the memories and traditions going. It's our little piece of country. Please don't take that away, that way of life away from the heart we've done. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Cader and Planning Commissioners. I'm Janet Barnetche. I live at 12517 Paddock Place and wish to again express my family's serious concerns regarding the zone change application for the apartment complex by the railroad tracks which borders our property. I know you probably have received my first letter, but I understand my second letter I brought in today did not reach you. It was in response to the Planning Department Staff Report. Unfortunately, reading the Planning Department Staff Report, it makes clear how badly we were misled at the February 15th neighborhood meeting. All in attendance were outraged when this project was presented. Did the meeting summary reflect the neighborhood's wholehearted disapproval of this project? Among the many reasons this project should be rejected is that the applicant has been shamefully dishonest with us. Here are just two examples of the deceptive statements made by the developer. We were told we would not have to be annexed into the city. However, since it is claimed an illogical boundary would be created, the report recommends annexation. Dishonesty. We were told that an extension of Rushmore would be created. Paddock Place would remain as is with the present cul-de-sac, and there would only be an emergency access gate on Piedmont. All traffic would flow in and out of Rushmore. However, the report states the site will be accessed via Paddock Place extended and Piedmont Avenue to the east. More dishonesty. When Dr. Guy and his associate came to my door, I was assured we would not have to be annexed into the city. It seems clear we will be railroaded into annexation if you approve this application. There is no mention whatsoever of the extension of Rushmore south of Hagman Road in the Department Staff Report. I was shocked to discover that the development has already been given an address on Paddock Place. The location of this complex in itself should be troubling to the owners, developer, and this commission. Considering that four parcels on Paddock Place are zoned and used for agriculture, the nearby sump, the railroad tracks, and the industrial complexes, how can this be considered a quote "high-quality environment for living" end quote? It certainly does not maintain a quote "continuity of existing development" end quote. How safe do you think children will feel in play areas bordering the railroad tracks, wall or no wall? High-quality living? I'm very concerned that the spores causing Valley Fever will become airborne during this construction. I have experienced Valley Fever firsthand, and it was debilitating. My request for compensation, should this be a health issue, is in my letter that I delivered today, which you have not received. How are we to trust those involved with this project when they have been dishonest from the beginning? Can you trust them? This applicant proudly stated he developed the polograms. We are still waiting for the final phase, the equestrian arenas, after which the polograms were supposedly named. It is truly disheartening and very troubling. The makeup of our neighborhood will change drastically with this project, and it will jeopardize the investments we have made in our homes. There is a bad smell in the air, and it's not coming from our animals. Please stop this project, deny the zone change. Our homes, health, lifestyle, and financial security are at stake. Thank you for listening.
My name is Jack Sheehan. I live at 12401 Paddock Place. My property runs along Piedmont and Paddock. 10 years ago, when I came here on the zone meeting, it was after Craig Hummel, who owned the property at that point, had called me and asked me to sell my property. I refused. When I refused, I was told, then I will put a mobile home park in and ruin the quality of your life. When I told my neighbor that, she called him, and he said I was a liar. At that meeting, his lawyer stood up and said they tried to put a mobile home park, and the county denied it. And they stand here today also talking about trying to put in a mobile home park. At this meeting in February, this doctor told us that if we forced him to put in the homes that had been tentatively approved 10 years ago, that he would not put in a brick wall, he would not put in landscaping, and he would run every single vehicle down Piedmont. These are the type of people you are dealing with here today. He told us he would not run a single vehicle down Paddock or Piedmont, not one. He guaranteed that vehicle gate on Piedmont would be fire access only. In this report, it talks about MNet domain. It talks about running vehicles up and down on Piedmont and on Paddock. When I talked to Steve Essman, sorry if I say your name wrong, today, and I apologize because I do want to caution staff when considering this project, yes, the guy is a prominent MD in town. I was told, do you know who he is? He is a prominent surgeon. Like, that meant something more than what I was. So I'd like to caution staff that when dealing with him, that he's just like anybody else here. Doesn't matter how much money he has, doesn't matter who he is. At this meeting, when I I'm sorry, when I talked to Steve, and I have totally lost my train of thought. Ban Rita, and I know this isn't necessarily the place, but they're not licensed in California. They're licensed in Nevada. They're not licensed as a foreign corporation in the state of California. You know, I question how they can even be doing business here today with you. I don't want to be annexed. When I called today and I talked to the agency that handles the annexation, they told me that there was a law about leaving county islands, basically, and said that he was informed of this fact, that he knows that we have to be annexed. None of us want to be annexed, not these four properties, not the subdivision next to us. And yet he told us, oh, I'm not going to do that. You don't you don't have to be annexed, et cetera. And yet I was told today that in order for this project to go forth, we would have to be annexed. I have livestock. I have horses. My neighbor has horses. I have another neighbor that has sheep. Some of us have chickens, cows, pigs, et cetera, or have had in the past and may again in the future. We will deal with nothing but complaints from this apartment complex if this goes in. If we get annexed, we will lose those rights ultimately, or we will lose the value of our property when we sell it because we can no longer utilize it the way it was utilized, especially if it temporarily take the animals off and then we sell it, the people aren't going to be able to put the animals back on it. So we're not going to be sell be able to sell it for that type of property or that type of use. You know, they could have bought the four of us out years ago, had a nice big chunk of property, and they chose not to do that. I have no desire to sell. I've lived there 25 years. Most of my neighbors have lived I've got one neighbor that's lived there longer than me. So most of the people in that neighborhood next to me have lived there since it was put in almost 30 years ago. Then, you know, they've all watched their kids growing up there, and, you know, people like the quietness of that particular neighborhood. On the traffic impact, it does not discuss the entire neighborhood to the east. Every one of those side streets will have, I believe they've mentioned 1,500 vehicles a day is what they're counting in 24 hours coming from this project. When I talked to Steve today, he thought that most of them would go up Rushmore onto Hagman. My question is, why would they do that if they're going east on Hagman? Those people are going to go out Paddock Place, and they're going to, you know, avoid going all the way out up Rushmore to Hagman and then turning right. They're just going to take the shortcut. Most of those people that they're treading to get down to Rosedale are going to take the side cuts right down through the subdivision. We don't want all these vehicles coming through our subdivision. You know, it's a 25 mile an hour street. We already have people that do occasionally speed up and down that street. I'm worried about child safety. You know, we're going to have a child get hit and killed and run over. It's too many vehicles for that neighborhood. You know, if it did get approved, which I hope it does not, I hope that at a minimum they're required to put in speed bumps. You know, and you can see that that's happened in other areas of town where, you know, the traffic pattern changed and neighborhoods were overwhelmed with traffic, and they had to put in speed bumps. That happened just off of Callaway to south of Rosedale. They're going to be overlooking my property. You know, I'm going to have light pollution. I'm going to have noise pollution. Obviously, I'm concerned about security on my property. I'm actually quite concerned about it. You know, we're going to have graffiti and other crimes, theft, et cetera, and I'm not looking forward to that. The Valley Fever issue, you know, is a concern for me. I had a liver transplant 10 years ago, so I have a pretty compromised immune system. I'm at high risk for it. I don't desire to die. So I'm forced to sit there and risk it or forced to risk to not risk it and sell my property, possibly at a loss. On the grading issue, you know, somebody at some point decided that property, you know, needed to be so much higher than our property. In some cases, it's three and four feet higher now, after they moved all that dirt from the underpass. And I can literally stand there and look, and in some cases, it's at the top of my fence. If they put in a six-foot-high fence, depending on how they put this, you know, you're talking two feet of fence, you know? I'm going to be flooded anytime they water anything. You know, it's just. And then some of the trees and shrubs that they're putting in are poisonous to animals. I have to worry every single time if wind blows and those leaves or those berries or whatnot fall onto my property and my horses eat it because they're right up against that fence, that they will die. What about the landing strip in the airplane for mosquito abatement? He comes in and turns right over the top of that property, flies literally a couple of hundred feet at best over my house. You know, I like the guy flying over. I've gone and talked to the pilot, heck of a nice guy. I have no problems with it. You know, but are the people in the apartment complex going to feel the same when this guy's flying right over the top of that apartment complex? You know, it's just it just seems bad for this area. It's an inappropriate use and inappropriate density for that particular area. And I would ask that you vote no against this project. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Lanham. I live at 12420 Paddock Place. We did send a letter, so there is a letter, but there was a couple things that they stated that they put a sign stating this public hearing, a public notice. I wish I had the picture, but that sign is placed in the middle of that field north of Paddock Place. There is not one person in the public that could see that sign unless they walked across that vacant field to see it. They knew. When we had this meeting back in February, they talked about, he said, in fact, it was the gentleman that just came up here and spoke. He said, if you guys are against apartments, we won't do it. We won't do it. So if you guys are against this, we won't do it. They lied. They also went door to door and went to one neighbor's house, and she expressed her disapproval. They went to the next-door neighbors and told them, oh, well, your neighbor's fine with it. These are not honest people. And, I mean, I understand, they made a bad investment. They made us they told us that they made a bad investment. That is not my fault. That is their fault. The national average for home devaluation, when you put a multifamily unit into owner-occupied home next to owner-occupied homes, is 13.8%. And on our properties, that's a pretty big, you know, you're talking about $50,000 a home. From my understanding, they paid $600,000 for this lot. Times that by the my $50,000, times the hundreds of people it's going to affect, the financial impact is much greater. I have, like I said, they and I don't want to be redundant because I have all the same issues. I have horses. I have kids. We've had the house for 18 years, and when the house was purchased, we asked what that or he did, asked what that land was zoned for. Single-family homes. We didn't have a problem with that. But can you tell me that you would be okay with 1,000 people living behind your door? And they said it's 17 acres. It's 13. It's 13.17 acres. It's not 17 acres. It's 13.17 acres. And they did say they would never use Paddock Place. They did say that Piedmont would not be used. So basically, everybody here that has gone to this meeting heard the same things. And they said, if you don't want this apartment complex, we'll build homes. We just won't make any money. Okay, well, I'm sorry. I don't want you to take what I and everybody else is here has done to build their livelihood and their homes because they want to make a profit. I get it. They're investors. We've all we've all made bad investments. I don't want to have to pay for that. I ask all of you to think about this. Would you want close to 1,000 people living in your backyard? Transient people, not homeless, but apartment people are transient. You're not you're not going to have the same people there for years. We're talking about 1,000 people coming in and out, different people, all the time. Would you want that in your backyard? Probably not. So I ask that you please don't do that to us.
Hi, my name is Ted Harvey. I live at 12308 Clemente. I bought my house based on the fact that it was in the county, that it was Zoned E, 10,000-square-foot lot, single-family home. I want it to stay that way. I do not want to be annexed in and whatnot. He bought that land, and it's landlocked, and it's very difficult for him. We understand that. He's proposing to put a road out the north, a private road, and he doesn't even own the land. So he's going to try to take everything out there, but if he goes the other way, we're going to have a lot of traffic impact right on my street. gonna have a lot of traffic impact right on my street. They need to leave it exactly how it is, 10,000-square-foot lots, single-family homes, and leave it how it is so that the entire rest of us don't have to suffer so that one man can make money. And that's what this is about. He needs to just leave it alone, leave it exactly how it's zoned, build single-family homes, and let our neighborhood survive exactly how it is. Most of the people that live there are the original owners that bought their homes. They've lived there this long, and the reason why is they can expand. You can buy that, buy those property as a young couple, raise your children, expand your property, and never have to move. Now, we're all gonna have to move based on this guy profiting because he bought land that was landlocked.
Good evening. My name is Steve Hawkes. I live at 3840 Piedmont, and I am the only fortunate person who gets to look at these. My house directly faces it. So when I look out my front door, I'll see the backside of apartments. You can't tell me that this is not gonna reduce my house value. And again, I've been living there 16 years, and we do 4H projects. All that's gonna change whenever we get annexed. And again, my house value will drop because nobody wants to walk out their front door and see the backside of an apartment complex. That's pretty much, I have all the other concerns everybody else, but that's my concerns.
Hi, my name's Darren Ashmore. I've lived on 12213 Nusell Avenue for the last 29 years. I believe my wife and I and our son, the one son at the time was the third to move into that development. I have the same concerns everybody else does. And like right now, a lot of the young kids that was raised there, the young adults, they're coming back to that neighborhood. Why? It's peaceful. It's a good neighborhood. Don't let somebody making money turn our neighborhood into a mess. Nobody wants all them apartments there. Leave it with the 10,000-square-foot lots, letting them build houses, that's fine, but please don't let him run our neighborhood to fatten his pocket.
Hi, Commissioners, my name is Brian Grimm. I live on 3524 Piedmont. And my wife, as a child, grew up on, in that neighborhood, in the cul-de-sac that is directly, or the neighborhood directly east to the proposed development site. And we have since returned, and we were trying to stake our claim to, to live there for a long time. We, we like it, it's nice and quiet, it's in the county, so we have animals. We have a two and a three-year-old. And it, it, it hurts my heart that they will no longer be able to chase their turkey around the backyard if this development gets what it wants. I read on here, I see a more restrictive designation. And when I hear restrictive, I hear a less free neighborhood, is what I hear. And I hear that this, this property is landlocked, and it's in a tough spot, and I, and I get that. But my neighborhood and my, my neighbors are going to have to suffer reduced freedom because it's, it's a poor spot for anything. And if you wanna put 10,000-square-foot-lot houses in there, let the people decide whether they wanna live next to the railroad tracks or not, not shoehorn 200-plus apartment complexes where people are constantly moving in and moving out. Assuming one car per apartment complex, 200 extra cars in that small neighborhood, it, there's surely a better way to make money and develop this property other than this proposed apartment complex.
Hello, my name is Azel Salinas. I actually was not notified about the development because I was outside of the buffer zone, but my concern is the quality of education. As nearest elementary school is Rosedale North, and Rosedale, Rosedale North has always seemed to be to capacity to the point where they actually run two shifts for kindergarten. They have to run a morning shift and an evening shift. So I, I ask that you guys take into consideration what kind of impact this might do to overfilling the classrooms at that small elementary school.
Hello, Commissioner, my name is Jack Osborne. I reside at 3501 Piedmont Avenue. Along with sharing most of the points that have been brought up thus far, I have a few additional points that I would like to make. This neighborhood, known as Emerald Estates, essentially is the south of Hegman, west of Old Farm, including Piedmont. We have 126 houses, including those four or five larger lots that are on Paddock in the entire area. Bringing 230 apartments in there, you're effectively going to triple the size of that neighborhood. With their, with or without their proposed, proposed private road, 1,500 additional vehicles throughout that entire area per day is on average. The average for apartment complexes is very nearly two cars per unit, so we're looking at 500-plus. Again, them representing these apartments as custom apartments or high-end luxury apartments, there's a total lack of amenities that indicate they're gonna be high-end. They've proposed covering 120 parking spaces of the 500-plus parking spaces. Again, not a high-end luxury type of apartment whatsoever. While this entire area is zoned for 10,000 square foot, I live on Piedmont, most of our lots are half an acre or larger, and most of the lots in that neighborhood are considerably above 10,000 square feet. Your Policy 6, Chapter 2 of the General Plan allows for the infill of residential land uses which are compatible with scale and character of the surrounding neighborhood. Obviously, if we're averaging much larger than that, that project is, is not compatible in scare, in scale or character. The General Plan also indicates that high and medium-density residential development, which includes this project, should be accommodated next to existing or planned commercial multifamily and principal transportation corridors. There's no multifamily within a reasonable area and no trans, no real transportation corridors at this point either. Apartment complexes generally use a large percentage of public transportation. There's no immediate or close public transportation, get bus, anything like that, close to that area either. As stated, the 13.5% is the national average of property value to drop in, in a residential area with multi-tenant approved. The 126 houses in that area that would likely suffer this type of drop is over $4 million. So while I feel for him making a bad $600,000 investment, I ask you to consider what is this one man's investment worth when there's 126 of us plus our wives and significant others that are gonna lose considerably more? And really, that's it. You know, it's a, it's a safe neighborhood. When you speak of density and the kind of density that they're talking about on 13 acres, not 17, and I'm assuming that the sump and parking lots including in there, so their density is actually a lot more. Not only is our, a lower density, the houses in here, every single house in that neighborhood has RV parking. Every single house in that neighborhood has 20 feet of clear space on left and right of the house. So our streets are not packed at all. There's, there's, there's not vehicles, there's not excessive vehicles on the street, there's not excessive vehicles in view, and all that's obviously gonna change as these peoples start using the neighborhood and stuff. So that just lends itself to compatibility again. We're, we're very spread out, we're not a dense neighborhood at all, we're a very safe neighborhood where kids can still walk because there's only very limited access to that neighborhood. There's three inlet streets into that neighborhood. It, it's a safe place for children, kids, and animals to be. Really, that's it. Just please, like I said, consider the many versus, versus the one. If, we all bought these houses, as many of my friends and neighbors are here today, we checked on zoning. When I purchased this house, I, I purchased land in the past where I made a mistake and didn't check the zoning around it. We checked the zoning on these lots. We played by the rules. We accepted that, and so why does he not have to? But every person in here looked, and we were zoned for property, and then we bought, and we're using our property like it's zoned for. So why does one man's matter more than all of us?
Good evening. My name's Denise Alamon, and I have my three boys, Noah, Lucas, and Joshua Alamon, with us. Before we moved to 3641 Piedmont Avenue, we lived at Seneca Falls on Olive in Verdugo. I would always tell my kids stories about how I grew up with my sponsor grandparents that brought my parents from Mexico here to the States. We were raised with animals, and I wanted that for my kids. So we moved from Seneca Falls to Piedmont three years ago, this, this month. Before Piedmont, we lived in three different apartments. We lived on Q Street before my husband went into the police academy. We lived at The Springs. Let me back up to Q Street. I saw a stabbing there outside my window. In, in The Springs, there was a shooting the year that we moved out of the apartments. And then before we moved to Piedmont, we had a 45-day escrow which moved us out of our house into an apartment for about a month until we moved into Piedmont. The previous owners have left us fossils on our rocks. They left us so many memories from their previous ownership of the house, and we plan on doing the same. If we ever had to move, which we're praying we don't have to move because this seemed like the perfect place for us when we moved in. Sorry, I'm so nervous. We homeschool. We've been homeschooling for eight years, and a part of that homeschooling, we've allowed the boys to buy whatever animals that they want. We first started with a dog, and then right before we moved in, we bought another dog because the other dog was not enough. Within a year, well, actually, within a couple months, we bought two goats. And the boys have been raising, they wake up, if it's hot in the summer, they'll wake up early enough so that it's not too hot for them to go and feed the animals. My oldest has been a part of 4H. Actually, they, the oldest two have been a part of 4H. My oldest has receive, received recognition of outstanding and invaluable service to the community by Kevin McCarthy, member of Congress, Junior Record Book Silver Book Medalist from Gene Fuller, Senator Gene Fuller. The same award by Assemblymember Vince Fong, Certificate of Recognition for Becoming a Junior Record Book Silver Medalist by Rudy Salis, and Certificate of Recognition for my, for his commitment to agriculture by Assemblyman Devin J. Mathis. None of this was easy for him. Countless of hours have passed in him working in each record book and each project for 4H. The second oldest was in 4H as a club, Cloverbud, which he hasn't been able to do this record book, but he looks forward to it. And something that my youngest, who's six, he wasn't in 4H at all at the time, but something that he asked today was, "I want to keep our animals so that I can be in 4H next year. I want to join in Cloverbuds and learn about our pets like my brothers did. Please don't build apartments by our house and annexes." And he does know what the word "annexing" means. This how? Not by definition, but we've talked about being annexed into the city if they build the apartments near our home. And his last quote was, "This house is the best house we've ever, that has ever been made." Something that we hope for them to understand in this is moving out of apartments, people don't consider it a special place. They don't consider it a place where they get to make their lives with their families, their temporary homes. And we bought our house on Piedmont to make this our permanent home, and I would hate it if somebody took our rights of having our animals atop from having security and everything else around the neighborhood that everybody has already voiced their opinions about. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Just a quick housekeeping. I wanna make sure that we're making the most of our time, so if you'd like to speak in opposition, feel free to come, form a line in the front row so that we can save a little bit of time in transit.
Good evening. My name's Cody Bowling, and I live on Clemente Avenue, which is on the east side of the proposed project. It's also where the secondary inlet and outlet would be for the proposed project. A couple of points, I know we've heard a lot from everybody here, and there's a number of our neighbors that were not able to make it tonight just because of work responsibilities and things of that nature. It's my understanding that there were 300 notifications sent out to the surrounding area about the project and the zoning change, and there were over 586, I believe, signatures opposing the project. Obviously, we have a number of people in opposition of the project. When my family and I purchased our home in this neighborhood, we did a thorough investigation of, of what the properties were zoned for and, and what we wanted as a family. And there were some, some very important things. We went out to the, to the Bakersfield City Police Department's website, and they have their Crime Watch indicators there, and you can pull it by neighborhood, and there was like close to zero crime in the neighborhood. We'd like to keep it that way. And historically, when multifamily dwellings are placed into a neighborhood, crime rates do go up and property values go down. So not many property owners, and I'm including yourselves, I'm sure, would vote to have your property values go down and your crime rates go up. So we're asking that you do not rezone, not only the, the, to a multifamily or, or, I forget the exact term, but, you know, also not to annex our neighborhood into the city.
Good evening. My name is Lance Lowery. I live at 3541 Piedmont Avenue. I'm down on the farther end, a kind of couple blocks away from this, this project. Piedmont Avenue is, is a cul-de-sac. I've been there for 27 years, raised my family there, just like everybody else in this community. A big concern for me is traffic and the density of this project. As it is right now, you have people that come down Piedmont Avenue trying to find a shortcut to Meacham that are speeding down that road, okay? If you put in that apartment and you allow that back access off Piedmont, they're just, the traffic is just gonna be horrendous, and some, a child will get hurt. Or my wife backing out of the driveway or something like that will get hit. Okay? Secondly, I'm concerned about the Rosedale North School. 20, 30 years ago, I was on school site council, I was on, for Rosedale North. We try, we set the boundaries for that and also the Rosedale District boundaries. They wanted to establish Rosedale North and the boundaries, hoping that they, they wouldn't have to move it. Previously, for about two to three years, even though we could walk across the field to Rosedale North, our kids had to go to Almandale. Okay? Then, because we put up a fuss and we said, "Hey, come on." Then, because we put up a fuss, and we said, "Hey, come on, the school's right there," they moved them back. This is going to impact the Rosedale School District. It's going to impact the whole community. I, for one, don't want to be annexed to the city. Okay? We love our county life. I live on a half acre that butts up against the railroad tracks, and I don't understand how this gentleman can sit there and say, "We're going to build luxury apartments," when you're going to have a railroad right there that's going to shake. Because we feel it shake, folks, you know, as well as saying, "Well, we can't build it because of the noise from the railroad tracks for a multifamily or for a 10,000-acre lot, but it meets the requirements for the noise impact for a multifamily." Noise is noise. And the whole project is going to affect our way of life. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Stephanie Limpanen. I live at 12307 Nacelle Avenue, which tees off into Piedmont. I live inside that pink bubble that was shown on the map earlier. It's one thing to look at a map. It's another thing to actually walk in the neighborhood. And if you actually walked in the neighborhood, you would see that this is a very poor location to put any kind of high-density living. Because, and especially if they were to put an entrance on Piedmont. The way Piedmont jogs off of Hagman, and then it curves around, and they're narrow streets. To actually walk it and see, I mean, even the lot they're building on, that's a small area to put that amount of people. Anybody would be concerned with the amount of traffic that would be added. It's a bad idea. And I know it's a tough spot to have bought property on, but there has got to be a better solution. And I would hope that you would consider withdrawing, you know? There's a better solution for the use of this space that everybody could probably be happy with. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Wade Yertoe. I live at 3822 Collier Street. And everyone's talked about the traffic, which that's a big impact. What no one's talked about is there's no signal light that leaves our properties. So if it backs up on Clementa to get out to Hagman, now you've got all these residents that cannot get out of their properties, as well as the traffic that's backed up and the exhaust fumes and things of that nature. There's been times just trying to pull out onto Hagman. It takes us a good five minutes to pull out, to get out onto Old Farm's the same thing, because there is no traffic signal to get out of our properties. There is one at Old Farm and Hagman, but that's not out of our properties. That's further up. So that's one of my main concerns, is he willing to pay for a signal light? And the area where a signal light would need to be would be a three-way signal light. And has there been an environmental impact report done for this area? Because I've not yet seen one. Thank you.
I'm Richard Garrett. I live at 12314 Nacelle Avenue, and that is at the corner of Piedmont. That traffic is very fast through there for a majority of the time. This will definitely raise that. The speed is already a problem. Unlike a lot of these people, I've only been in the neighborhood for two years, but I bought out there because I wanted in the county, and I wanted a quiet neighborhood. I could not believe how quiet and peaceful and friendly it is in that area. And for the school situation, I work for the Rosedale District. I am not speaking for them, but they are already moving county classes from the superintendent to a different school site to keep from having to put more portables in at north. All of their school sites, anytime we add students, they have to add more portables. And if the area grows by that number, that is going to significantly impact the Rosedale District and those schools and that site. Thank you.
Before I close the opposition, is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of the project? If not, prior to proceeding to rebuttal comments, now's the time for Commissioner comments. Commissioner, please note this is a time to ask questions of the public. It is not a time to express opinion. It is only a time to ask questions. Mr. Egger?
We can do rebuttal first.
Okay. I was wondering about that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So without further ado, let's rebut. So... So...
Sorry. Would like to talk in favor, just to answer some of the questions.
Yes. Of course. Yes. So we are now moving into a time for the public in support of the project to... Please remember, you have five minutes for these rebuttal periods, so please be succinct. And to save time, please move to the front for both portions of the rebuttal period. Thank you. Oh, Dana? Could you please start the clock? Once they get to the... Thank you.
Jim Moreno again. I only had a couple of responses. One was that I was there 10 years ago, and there was a buyer for a mobile home park. They looked at it. I told them when they started that they can't mitigate the noise, and it crashed and burned. So I know that that was something that was going on. And then, the mosquito abatement. I've also met with them and talked with them again 10 years ago. And the traffic is off to the side, the runway, if you look at the alignment. It's more over the property to the north in this neighborhood than across this property. The noise is just a really terrible issue for this particular property. And it's going to be very expensive to develop, no matter how you look at it. I think all I said was that there was an agreement to put in the extension of Rushmore and didn't say anything about Paddock. Paddock, I think there's only 30 feet of public right-of-way there. So that's about all I have to say. I think the owner wants to talk.
Hi there. My name is Vikas Gai. I'm the owner of the property. No, first of all, I think I listen to each and every comment, and I respect everybody who came here and said those comments in front of everybody. You know, when I went for the meeting also, I explained it to everybody. We're not doing any traffic on Piedmont. Again, there is only going to be fire access on Piedmont. Everybody's concerned about the traffic on Piedmont and paddock. I've never said that we are using paddock. We are using Rushmore, which is a new development road that we're going to do with Craig Hummel, and that's going to be taking the traffic right to the Hagman. So everybody is saying the same thing once again. You know, there is no traffic. And plus, we did the traffic study, which says, even if we don't do this, still, it does not affect the traffic too much. And the traffic studies with the city. As far as, you know, other concerns with the school, we have a letter from the school which says, even if we have this development, there is no concern about increasing the traffic or anything for the school. We... What else? The questions and concerns were... I'm trying to recollect all the questions, but I think most of the major concern was either traffic. And for the, you know, for coxie infection or valley fever, people talking about, you know, anytime you do any development... I'm a doctor. Anytime you do any development, people get exposed to pores. Everybody has its own immunity. Some people get coxie infection, some people don't. So, you know, there are certain rules that we have to follow, like wet the land before doing all this, and we're going to follow all the rules. You know, this is a very odd-shaped, you know, land. And if at all we do 10,000-square-feet lot, which is going to be horrible, because it's next to the railway road track. And if at all we don't do this big 12-foot wall on the railway road track, there is no way we can mitigate the sound. There's no, you know, we are doing 12 feet, which is going to help the neighbors on the east side, too. So it's not like... I think I went and personally met with so many people who are here, but I think because they thought that the paddock is going to be extended or the Piedmont is extending, we're not doing that. We just emergency exit on Piedmont. And paddock also, in our plan, we just said Rushmore is going to be a new street, which we're going to pay with Craig Hummel, who is giving access to us to extend the Rushmore to Hagman. And that's going to be the main street, main traffic going to the thing. You know, if at all we don't do that, and there's a lot of money which is going to cost to build the wall and to build the street, if we don't do that, everything is going to go to Piedmont. All the traffic is going to go to Piedmont. So Piedmont traffic is going to be higher if we don't do this project. I mean, we are making a nice wall all across the property so that we, you know, we're going to be not letting people, you know... It's going to be beautiful. It's not going to be bad. And it's going to be luxury apartments. And I'm sorry, if I'm taking too much time, that's okay. No worries. Thank you.
We're running low. 10 seconds. Nine seconds.
Okay. Thank you. Hi, Commissioner. This is Harry Sidhu. Just wanted to bring a couple of points only about the paddock and the Piedmont.
Sorry, we're at time.
Okay. Thank you.
No, we do the whole rebuttal time is five minutes. So they just caution the speakers going forward, for the ones that are against the project, remember that everyone speaking needs to share five minutes.
Yes. Five minutes per side. Okay. So with that, we will move to a five-minute rebuttal time for the opposition. Again, five minutes total, so please...
Okay. My rebuttal is that on the map provided to us, or the drawing provided to us, the street clearly shows going beyond, taking paddock place, clearly beyond the entrance of the development. And also about the valley fever and the immunity. All you have to do with valley fever is breathe. There is no immunity until you get it. And if you go into remission. We talked to a gentleman while we were doing the petition. He moved into this neighborhood because he lived on the east side, beautiful home, went in with luxury apartments. Within two years, it was entirely Section 8, and everything about the neighborhood was downhill. He moved to his location right now, and he totally does not want this apartment complex going in.
You've got one gentleman standing here telling you that it is going down paddock. You've got the owner of the property telling you it's not going down paddock. We can't get a straight answer. We don't want it going down paddock. We don't want it going down Piedmont. He tells us that if we don't allow him to do it, it's going to go on Piedmont in tough luck. We would rather have 10,000-square-foot homes with access to Piedmont than, you know, which was only like 90-some homes versus, you know, 1,500 cars a day. You know, so the whole thing, they can't even agree amongst themselves. Their traffic impact study never even looked at those side streets. Not one mention is made in that traffic impact study on those side streets in that neighborhood. Not one.
Sorry, the line is getting long behind you.
All right. And in regards to valley fever, there's also histoplasmosis. My wife and I own a veterinary hospital, and we've been doing a study from that thing that comes down. And it's impacting animals and humans from where they went and did the underpass. So that's another thing.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, he's basing these zoning changes... I don't know if anybody's caught it, but he's chasing... Basing, he wants to do all these zoning changes, and he's going to put a road across land of the north. He doesn't own the property. He's doing all this right now, and he's saying he's going to put a road across there. He doesn't own the land. He has to get permission, and he's saying it's a private road. What kind of road? What's it going to be? It's on private land. He's not saying anything, but he's basing, he wants all these changes. So until he can figure out what he's going to do, he shouldn't even be here.
Just addressing again, if they were to acquire the land and do the private road as the only entry into this complex from Hagman. That road, Rushmore, is within 100 yards of the major lighted intersection at what I believe is Allen and Hagman. So you're going to redo the hill again and take traffic off of Hagman within 100 yards of a red light. And then also, you have three lanes at 50 miles an hour going west on Hagman. How are you going to turn left into that complex? So we're going to have no left-hand turn? If there's an alternative route through the neighborhood, they're going to take it. If not, you're going to force all that traffic down and make a U-turn somewhere, half a mile down in another neighborhood?
Might be real quick. If you could see the, and I'm going to point on it, the property right here is mine. That plane flies directly over my property every single day for the mosquito abatement. My kids love it. They watch it. Flies right over. First of all, I love you guys. I met you guys. I love meeting you all, and you're awesome.
Thank you.
I just forgot to mention this. There are also kit foxes, kangaroo rats, and red foxes that live on that property back there. I know because they come in my yard and try to kill my chickens, which, you know, which is fine. I'm okay with that. You're talking about 42 homes versus, what is that? Maybe 100 people versus 1,000 people? I'd take 42 homes over 229 apartments any day.
And even if they do build a road through the property at the top, what does that do for our annexation into the city? As much as I do love the city of Bakersfield, I am a county resident, and I want to stay that way.
Okay. Now that we have had the period of rebuttal, we'll move into Commissioner questions. So this is an opportunity for Commissioners to ask questions of the public, also city staff, but not give our opinions or thoughts on the matter. Thank you. And Commissioner Lomis was a very enthusiastic first push of the button.
He tried to tell me I couldn't ask any questions. Yes, I can.
I thought I forgot to clear it.
This is directed to staff. And Ms. Kitchen, I don't know who wants to field this. Oh, I've got two questions. The first one is to address the traffic, and I'm kind of confused. Because my staff report clearly states that the traffic's to be directed on paddock and Piedmont. Could you go over that?
Absolutely, Commissioner Lomis. I would be happy to clarify that issue. Presently, the project site only has access, legal access, via paddock. The traffic study, and I took a look at it just based on everyone's comments, it does state that paddock would be the access, and that's what the traffic study is based upon. So that is what was analyzed, and that's what was presented to staff. That being said, the applicant could purchase an easement or other type of access over the property to the north. However, that's not part of the proposal that has been sent to us.
And to dovetail into that same question, the staff report says... It addresses that the developer would be required to pursue eminent domain proceedings. What is that? What's that about? It's in... You want to know where it is? It is on page six of 12.
Of the staff report?
Of the staff report. Right smack in the middle, that's addressing site access. And I can read it to you while you guys are looking. It says additionally, it may become necessary to obtain any off-site right-of-way, and developer is unable to obtain the required right-of-way, then the developer will be required to pay the city at front costs. Why are we addressing eminent domain? Are we expecting this? Why is that being addressed?
I believe that this sentence is taken out of context. Just to clarify, the city would not pursue any sort of eminent domain... Just to clarify, the city would not pursue any sort of eminent domain type of proceedings for a private development project of this nature that is absolutely outside of the city's purview.
So I'm confused in that.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm not sure what that sentence is referring to.
It's in the context of access to the site.
Right. So I think that what may have been intended to be said here was that any type of development project is required to have adequate legal access that is, meets the city standard. So this project would need to obtain that in order to move forward. That would not be through an eminent domain process. That would be up to the applicant to purchase. For example, if he wanted to purchase the extension of Rushmore, that would be something that he could do.
Would this given, would this need to be looked at closer and addressed within the staff report? Is that reflected in any of the conditions or only in the report?
We would take a look at that, absolutely.
Okay, my, sorry, indulge me. I have another question. It's been a while since I've looked at the annexation issues, so I actually don't know this answer. In, if, if, if a annexation proceeding was to take place, I'm not saying it is or isn't, don't worry, what would happen to, say, someone that has a half-acre lot within the county, and they were annexed into the city? I kind of know the answer to this one, but could you answer that?
Absolutely. Just for everyone's benefit, prior to working at the city, I worked at the county for eight years, so I'm very familiar with the zoning entitlements that you all currently have. The way that that would work is if there were an annexation that took place, any kind of land use or animals that you have presently, you would be able to continue to have those. You would be grandfathered in. However, if you stopped having that use or stopped having the animals for a period of one year or more, then the grandfathering goes away. So that's how that would work.
Thank you. And could you also address, someone mentioned 13 acres or 17 acres. What are we looking at? Where's that discrepancy coming from?
The report that we have all references 13 acres, so I'm not sure where the 17 reference was.
Thank you. And one more question, sorry. In sign placement, could you address the sign placement?
Sure. Our ordinance requires that the sign be placed on the property's frontage on their access road. So in this case, that would be along the Piedmont, I'm sorry, paddock access to the north portion of the property. The site also has signs on other perimeter parts of the property, but as was pointed out, those are difficult to see because of the peculiar shape of this parcel.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Coleman.
Sorry, thank you. This is also for staff. There was a concern raised about access to transportation. Can you talk about that a little bit? Is that a requirement for multifamily housing? That it be within a certain distance of some transportation mode other than driving a car?
The city's general plan has several policies which encourage citing multifamily-type uses near existing transportation, public transportation, bus routes, bike routes, those kinds of things. But it is not a codified requirement. What our code does say is that if certain multifamily projects are within a certain proximity, usually a half-mile or a quarter-mile to, say, an active bus line, then the developer could request a density bonus. And what that does is it allows them to build an additional amount of units on the property if they meet certain criteria such as proximity to public transportation. But again, it's not required.
So you're saying if there was a bus flow in there, you'd build more apartments?
They could request to do that through the public process, yes.
And one last question. On the issue of the noise mitigation, the noise mitigation requires a 12-foot wall on that, I'm sorry which direction it is, but along the railroad tracks, basically. Would that not be, would that even be allowed in a residential zoning? Or is that only because of this multifamily?
Any type of residential zoning would require the construction of some sort of boundary to ensure that whatever was built on this property was not significantly impacted. Again, our city general plan establishes decibel criteria for residential uses, and this study did an analysis based on the railroad and determined what height the wall would need to be in order to adequately mitigate and make sure that this project was in compliance with our general plan. Similarly, if they were proposing a single-family type of development, they would have to do the same type of noise study. And I don't have that information. I don't know what height of the wall would be. I assume it would be similar. It might even be a little lower, given that the single-family would likely be one story. But it's all very project-specific, based on the type of development that's proposed.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Wade.
Thank you. To staff also, there's been a lot of talk about valley fever. Is there anything about a change in zone that would increase the chance of anybody in the neighborhood getting valley fever from this project?
Well, the answer, the simple answer to that, I would say, would be no, given that anytime you turn dirt in this part of our county, valley fever spores could be exposed. Presently, the site is zoned for residential uses, and at some point in time, construction activities could occur now, and that would be moving dirt. That being said, the Kern County Health Department has a number of suggested practices to avoid valley fever. Additionally, the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District requires permits for any type of dirt-moving activities, and they require that the dirt be wet and dust be mitigated. And that's another method that they've identified to address valley fever.
Thank you.
I had two quick questions for staff. One, if staff could explain, you know, there's been some mention of differential of grade and the fear of stormwater. And so I was curious if, or I was just wondering if, for the benefit of the audience, if Ms. Kitchen, you could explain the process, or maybe this would be Mr. Archibald's question as far as how stormwater is mitigated through development? Oh, or it would be Daniel.
I'll go ahead and answer that. I mean, the project would have to go through a grading plan process, and the city would review a grading plan. We don't allow drainage to go across property lines from one property to another. So we, they would hire an engineer to do a drainage study. We would review the grading plan and all the drainage facilities and make sure they kept their water, their runoff onsite, or a different method that we approved. So it would probably make the situation better for flooding if that ground is higher. And if water is currently going across the parcel lines, you know, we would actually maybe make that even better than what's there now.
And then my second question is also from Mr. Padiya. Concerns access. The discussion about Rushmore and paddock and their proximity to existing lights, what would the anticipated improved intersections at Hegeman and Rushmore, for example, would it, would it be lit, would it be a traffic light? Would it be just a left turn?
I'll back up a little bit. The site plan that we reviewed showed, and this was, you know, many months ago, showed their access off of paddock place. And that's like Ms. Kitchen mentioned, that's what our analysis was based on. If Rushmore Drive was extended south, without a traffic signal, it would be right-in, right-out only. And if they wanted to install a traffic signal, it would be a convenience signal, and there would be progression studies conducted to make sure that that signal was coordinated with other signals. And we also have our traffic engineer here, city traffic engineer, if we wanted to get into more details.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, I was curious if a light, a traffic signal was even an option, given its proximity to Allen?
That would be part of the study. I mean, we can't determine it yet. That would be part of the progressive, signal progression study that the developer would have to do.
Understood. Thank you. We have Commissioner Bell.
Yeah, not to be redundant, back to staff. So you felt that the paddock access was adequate and reasonable? Is there, we've heard talk of them getting northerly access and being directed to Hegeman to ensure appropriate access and not to reduce what's existed for 20, 30, 40 years. Is there a reason that that hasn't been considered or pushed back to development? Or you just really felt strong about the paddock's access not being?
That's what the developer and the applicant proposed access off of paddock place, and that's what the traffic study showed. And we have Mr. Purupri here, our city traffic engineer, who can go into more details about the traffic study, if you wish.
Yeah, could you do that for me? I'd like to hear little specifics of what the developer has proposed and what we've heard in opposition. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, caterer, and members of the planning commission. We did receive a traffic trip generation rates for this proposed development, and as far as the traffic department is concerned, one access out of this development is more than sufficient, looking into the trips that were generated concerning the IT trip generation rates. So according to the design manual and the municipal code, a secondary access or an emergency access is required. I would say, I would go back, I'll say an emergency access is required only when the dwelling units are increased by 200 units. In this case, there are 228 units. So that is the reason why a secondary or fire access is needed. Other than that, single access is more than sufficient, according to the calculations that were produced and generated, submitted to us. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, we will now close the Commissioner comment section and move into comments and action. Oh, and I will also now close the public hearing and move into comments and action by Commissioners. Five-minute break? Five-minute break? Okay. We will adjourn for five minutes and return for comments and action. Thank you. Commissioners, public, I think we'll restart the meeting. And we are now at a time for Commissioner comments discussion and ultimately, action on item 5B. Commissioner Lomas has her.
I just had a cookie, so, here we go. That's what we get to eat here, seriously. None of us had dinner. We had a cookie. But thank you, staff, for the cookie. So, first thing, I really am thankful you, all of the neighborhood came in with a very respectful manner. Thank you. I know it's very dear to your heart, and you're impassioned about it, that everyone was respectful. So for that, in presenting your concerns, for that, thank you. What we look at is, what I look at is, we weigh everything. And what we're, what I'm looking for is compatibility. Is it compatible? Does it work? Does it make sense? Is it an asset to the area? While our staff report says it meets criteria, well, our job is to look at it a little bit further. Sure, it meets criteria, and that's their job to establish that, but does it fit? Does it, as I say, fit in your neighborhood? So after hearing all of the concerns of the neighborhood, they're all, they're really, almost all of them are really valid concerns. This is a goofy-shaped project, property. And as you said, not your fault, not your fault that it's a goofy-shaped property. Does, so then we go back to, okay, well, what are they asking for? Well, they're asking for apartments. And apartments need to be in all areas. I do want to say this. Apartments do need to be in all areas, because probably every one of you lived in an apartment at one time or another. But should they be here is the question. In, you've got industrial, you've got animals, and you've got a railroad. To me, that piece of property's highest and best use looks closer to light industrial. I don't see apartments. I just don't. I don't see what, how it fits. And again, we look at compatibility and what's surrounding and what that neighborhood is, and the project before me just doesn't look like it fits to me. So I would look for the other Commissioners to weigh in. I would be inclined to deny the application. If any other Commissioners have anything?
Yes.
Okay.
Next, we have Commissioner Wade.
Thank you, Chair. You stole a lot of what I was going to say. I'd like to echo what you said about how you guys, how you all presented yourselves, and how organized your thoughts were, and there wasn't a whole lot of repetition. You presented a smart argument on behalf of your neighborhood. I want to say that contrary to what I think a lot of people here think, we need more apartment complexes in Bakersfield. We need more infill. We need particularly infill in lots like this, that's like, what else are you going to put there? It's tough. It's a, the property owner has a tough issue here. And high-density residential is one of the few things that could work here. It alleviates traffic. It's better for environment, it's better for the community. That being said, it doesn't fit. I agree.
Okay. So we have Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. I'm not trying to repeat what's already been said by the other Commissioners, but we do need more multifamily residential. Every time we have a multifamily residential project that's near other residential, standard residential projects, we get this outpouring of comments about the nature of multifamily housing, and that'll devalue my property. However, I look at this particular project, and I have some significant concerns. I just don't buy the argument that you can have luxury apartments next to the railroad track. And so, in my opinion as well, I don't think this project fits. Thank you.
My apologies. I really just didn't want to be the Johnny-come-lately kind of thing, but, okay. So here's what I want to celebrate from both sides. I'll be transparent and tell you that for a living, what I do is I develop. So I do understand the developers and their attempt to put in good infill. I think I celebrate that. I celebrate their common sense, that they don't have a lot of options. And I think even moreover, I celebrate that all of you came together as a neighborhood, and good for you, good for Bakersfield, and just your efforts to come in and clearly and concisely speak your hearts. There's some things I disagree with in your opinions, but there's some things that I strongly agree with. For my part in this, my number-one concern is what Commissioner Coleman said, and that is luxury apartments next to a, to a railroad would not be a development aim. I would have, and I think I would be concerned about that investment. And so I, on this one, just think I'm in favor of the community, so.
Okay. And I will round out the conversation, and also try not to, as I asked you all not to repeat each other's comments, try not to repeat the Commissioners's comments. I would, in the conversation, stepping back, looking at this aerial map, I think this is a conversation that we see a lot in Bakersfield, is what was once pastoral, which was once agrarian, is no longer agrarian. I mean, there are definitely smaller lot sizes within a stone's throw of all of your neighborhood. There are schools, there are parks. There's actually a multifamily housing project just off-screen, heading east. And so I think, you know, as we grow and as we become a city, you know, there's an acknowledgement that we need a diversity of housing, and that we need to be thoughtful in how we do that. And I think, to me... And I think, to me, I would say, you know, some of my best neighbors are renters, they live in houses, and they are just as kind to my daughter, they are just as sweet to my wife and I, and they're, because I think different housing options should not be pitted against one another. But I do think that when you have a diversity of uses, such as horses and apartments, that there's a thoughtfulness needed to make that happen. And I think what we saw tonight, I'm still unclear how the staff report was written as far as where we were getting through this project. Piedmont being mentioned as a connection is not as a connection, you know, sentiments of just, and I think this is a very interesting parcel, and I'm very curious to see how it develops, but I think I would side with my other Commissioners in saying that as this proposal goes currently, it, I can't move it forward. So with that, I will be looking for a motion.
I'll give you one.
Commissioner Lomas?
All right.
Can I get a second?
Do you need any lang, you need some language?
Since there's two different approvals here, and there's a little bit of a distinction.
Oh, yes.
So one will be to recommend denial of the general plan amendment, and the other one will be to just deny the request for the zone change, and the PUD plan.
And there you go. That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Coman? Madam Secretary? It's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Coman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Item 5B is now closed. We move on to item 5D. Oh, let's, yes, we'll start in a...
Give them about two minutes to leave, maybe?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioners, public? I think, should we, let's start again. I applaud the audience that is still here and diehard city government fans. A pleasure being with you in the eight o'clock hour. We are moving on to item 5D. Ms. Kitchen, if you'd give us a quick report?
I will. Just a point of clarification, the applicant for this project informed staff that he met with the individual that removed this item from consent, and I believe that the questions were answered, so...
Yeah, she's not here.
If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item, perhaps you could raise your hand. So at that point, given that there's no need to discuss, I would turn it back to you.
Okay. No, yours is coming up. Yours is 5G, I believe. So item 5D, which, just to clarify, is the general plan...
Commissioner Kater, I believe you would still need to vote on item 5D at this point?
We're good.
Okay.
So Commissioner, 5D is, or 5G is on its way. 5D is the one, member from the audience, or from the publics?
Commissioner Kater, the appropriate action would be to close the public hearing for item 5D and to seek a motion.
Ms. Kitchen, we're, yeah, we were just clarifying whether Mr. Coman's was this one or the next one. Thank you. So item 5D, I believe we can now close, so if we can get a motion, if I can get a motion to approve staff recommendation on item 5D?
Motion to approve staff's recommendation on 5D.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell. Can I get a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Commissioner Wade. 5D is now closed. Moving on to...
Vote, vote.
Oh, Madam Secretary, a roll, a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Coman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Now, item 5D is closed, and I am back mentally here. We're now moving on to 5G. Ms. Kitchen, if you would give us a report?
Absolutely, and we're all tired, Commissioner Kater. So item 5G is a revision to an existing plan development review plan that was previously approved last year for the Bakersfield Commons project. I can run through just very briefly some of the revisions that they're proposing, but this is an overall site map of the project as it was approved last year. There's, the applicant is requesting some minor adjustments to the areas shown in yellow arrow, yellow arrow here. I am tired, too. So this is the first. This shows a before and after. It's a reconfiguration of an apartment complex layout, as shown here. The image on the left is what was approved last year. The image on the right is what is being proposed now. There is no change in the number of units or any of the main access points, with a minor exception of an additional driveway on Brim Hall. However, these have all been reviewed by Public Works and city staff, and it all conforms to standard. The second revision relates to some of the, I believe these are the office structures over on the other side of the project, and again, it's an adjustment to the layout. So overall, not substantial changes, no changes in the number of units or square footage, a minor revision that's before your commission. The applicant is here as well, if there are additional comments or questions related to this project.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If we, we now open to public comments, right?
Commissioner Kater, I think since this one was pulled by Commissioner Coman, and the applicant may not know what type of questions he'll want, I think we could deviate a little bit from our normal standards to hear what his questions would be, so that way she could address them accurately.
Let's deviate. Commissioner Coman?
I was a little confused by the way it was written. It talks about update the site configuration for one PCD, which allowed approximately 130 multifamily dwelling units on seven acres, to PUD 16, which allowed approximately 605 multifamily dwelling units on 38 acres. I was, I think I was just confused about what we're doing here.
The issue here, this site is so large, it's 258 acres, so it has multiple PCDs and PUD plans. It was broken up into sort of phases, I guess you could say. So the proposal that's before us tonight is two separate PUD plans. One is for the 130 units, and one is for the 600 units. Again, it's a change in the footprint, though, not the number of units.
I kind of misplaced my notes, so, yeah, I don't think I have any more to discuss.
Okay.
Do we have any other Commissioner comments? Or, sorry, I believe the applicant?
I think unless there, I have heard no real opposition, so if you guys want to make a motion, it's appropriate. I don't think, you could ask the public, is there anyone here that wants to oppose anything?
Commissioner Lomas looks ready to make a motion. Anybody, any other member of the public wish to speak? Okay, not this, public session, the public hearing is closed, and can I get a Commissioner motion?
Certainly. We are, my motion is to adopt the resolution and approve the planned development review number 180098, as depicted. And also, let's see, why don't we just read it? Recommendation, adopt resolution, suggest findings, approving plans, planned development review number 180098, as depicted in the project description and subject to the listed mitigation measures and conditions of approval.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Coman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Okay, we have now made it through the public hearings. We are now moving on to communications. Staff, is there any?
I do have one quick announcement. As you know, Kevin Coyle is the planning director. He's been on board since March of this year, and pursuant to the planning commission bylaws, the planning director is the secretary for the planning commission. So today will be my last time sitting up here, and I will be handing the torch to Kevin. I will still be here and available when Kevin says I need to be, but I will leave that to him, and he, you will be in very capable hands, and he's very excited to provide guidance and advice for you moving forward.
Thank you.
I promise to stick out for this last one.
So who do we call when we have questions?
You're still welcome to call me or Kevin. We're both available.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Commissioner comments. Any comments? My comment? Okay. I have, I have one comment. I would just like to, many of you have asked. Oh, you have one, too? She first? Oh, I thought you were telling me to go. You want to go? Okay, okay. Since many of you have asked, I just wanted to make the announcement that my wife and I welcomed a little girl into the world last week, and so, thank you much. Thank you for all your kind messages and comments, and we are over the moon, and I'm a little tired. I have baby on my mind, and that's why I've been a little bit, yeah, it's been a learning process today, but thank you. And then we have Commissioner Lomas.
Well, that's exactly what I was going to say. I was going to say, good job on your first meeting.
Thank you much.
And you'll get a little more sleep with your next one, because you have a new baby. That was my announcement. Okay, that's all I have.
We're like in sync, yeah. All right. Any other Commissioner comments? If not, the meeting is adjourned at 8:21. Thank you, thank you, everyone that stuck it out.
You guys earned your paychecks tonight.